Is related to the lot width as well as the maximum allowed building frontage.
Good evening.
Good evening, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
My name is Elizabeth Young Jojo.
Oh, can you make sure you're speaking into the mic so you're getting picked up on the recording? We can hear you.
I do love a good mic. Hi, my name is Elizabeth Young Jojo. I'm the president of Redburn Development Partners. I'm here with Joe Pernicero, who's our development associate, working on this project.
Good to see everybody again. So as you mentioned during the agenda, we worked to kind of reduce the amount of variances we're requesting. Took some feedback from the last meeting. And obviously, we've dropped our variance request significantly down. I believe it was 41 requests last time. We're down to 14. So I'll show you, walk you through some of the changes we made, and then happy to answer any questions. Just to refresh, we're talking about the old Cathay football field there on Seventh Ave. We walked through this last time. Proposing the subdivision of the existing lot into 14 lots for 12 future townhouses. And in the field and the gym building will remain separate lots on their own. There's an overview of the site. So you see the gym and parking lot at the top. And then the majority of the field stays one large parcel. And then the 12 new lots there along Seventh Ave. Some photos. So to start with a lot with variances. Basically, what we did was we pushed the entire project north a little bit. We were able to gain extra space in between sets of buildings. So you'll see proposed Lot 4, Lot 1, and Lot 9 no longer need variances. They meet the 40-foot requirement. Now there's about 25 feet in between these buildings or these sets of buildings. That's probably the largest change we made. As for the building frontage variances. This has not changed since last time. Obviously, the two middle ones need relief from the 100% frontage requirement or the 80% frontage requirement. So all the ones in the middle there still need that request. Obviously, the other change from last time is removal of the driveways. Obviously, the parking situation was a big topic of discussion. So we've opted unfortunately to just go for street parking, which is allowed. Although, you know, we did believe the driveways were a big selling point and we wanted to have them. You know, they seems to be easier just to move forward without them and just use the allowed street parking. So happy to answer any questions if you have anything else to add on that.
This drawing does still have the driveways on. Oh, those are sidewalks, sorry.
Any questions from the board? On I appreciate your removing the driveways. That was a concern that I particularly had. On the concern I still have that remains with the proposal is the density of the units and the clear ability to just replicate this at least three times over with the property remaining. So if you had any other discussions or do you have any additional feedback as far as future plans for that site or self-imposed restrictions or anything like that to address the density that you're asking for?
Well, just to talk about the blocks of four, which I think is the first thing you brought up.
Oh, just make sure you're sorry, I'm speaking into the mic.
Blocks of four, yeah. Oh, right. Well, plans for the rest of the field, I can't say that we have any at the moment. This is a new, this is a new project for us. It's a new, we've never tried to do anything like this. I do think it'll be extremely well received in the neighborhood and something that I think will really help the neighborhood grow and thrive and something that's needed. Can I say that we wouldn't necessarily be back to you to put in another row of these? No, I cannot. I think if the neighborhood likes it, if they sell well, there would be a chance that we would come back to you in the future. It is not in our plans at the moment, but I would never want to close the door to anything like that. I'm not sure what the restrictions would be, but if the restrictions are there and they weren't, we weren't allowed to, then we would not be allowed to. We are coming to you with this as a standalone project. We are not saying this is phase one of a two-phase project. This is a standalone project. But again, I'm never going to say the door is completely closed. Again, if they sell well, if the neighborhood likes them, if the city of Troy likes them, we could potentially consider another separate project behind them.
Tamara?
What's, I think you might have told me, I can't remember. What is going to be the list price on these townhouses?
You will know that.
So we're trying to keep it below 250,000. And we believe that's kind of the market for that area.
What was this square footage?
1,600.
And I had, let's see.
Three-bed, two-bath.
Is there HOA or anything like that?
No, we're trying to avoid that. That's why, you know, trying to keep these on separate lots, no shared.
Yep. All right. So they're townhouses. Okay.
Have you, sorry, go ahead, Steve.
What do you plan on the front facing forth and on the back facing the back of the field?
I do have rendering. Just give me a minute to pull it up.
We definitely designed these with a historic look in mind. We'll show you the rendering.
Hey, can you see that? Nope, there it is. So that's the front, kind of going with the the historical look. Sides and back will just be kind of standard siding.
We really, when we started planning out this project, we really do envision these being for young families. Hence, the three-bed, two-bath layout. I, again, I think it's something needed in the neighborhood. And something that I think brings in a new energy. But again, a very family feeling energy, which, you know, I'm up at that site all the time, several times a week. And that's really what I feel like the neighborhood is. Can I ask any questions?
Yep.
Are there basements? There are not, there are not basements. No, there are not. And cost, cost is a real factor for us here, right? And that's one of the reasons why there aren't basements. And that's one of the reasons why we are asking to do blocks of four instead of blocks of two. That saves us an entire exterior wall, which is far more costly to build. Building in blocks of four is one of the reasons why this project could move forward financially and be at that affordable price point. All the mechanicals around the roof, where's like AC and stuff like that? And they're, they're inside, they're inside the units. They're not on the roof.
Forced air, forced out air, yes. You don't know the answer to that.
Maybe all electric.
Mike.
I believe they're going to try to be all electric. Yeah, everything is internal to the homes. There are some.
Do you mind pulling back up the site plan that shows this in the context of the overall property?
Side note, for anyone who's interested, we're having an open house at the school building on April 12th, if you're interested in checking it out.
Okay.
10 to 1 on April 12th.
Is making, I understand from, I know, trying to keep costs low so that you can have affordable pricing is a larger lot depth, something you'd be willing to entertain as a concession?
Yeah, I don't mean, you know, we have to talk about the exact number. I don't want 100-foot deep lots, but yeah, I'm sure there's some.
That doesn't necessarily make sense, but yeah.
I'm sure there, I'm sure there's, yeah, I'm sure we could make some larger backyards is kind of the point there, I think.
Yeah, again, yeah, it's just it it's such a small footprint of the property for, that's why to me it seems very dense. I think the the lot sizes is generally in keeping with the neighborhood, but that kind of density of units within that square footage is a little bit high for the neighborhood. So just having, and again, the ability, I realize there's no future plans, this is standalone. But the ability to do more is putting me at kind of apprehension about it and setting precedent.
I mean, I think having a bigger backyard works with, you know, what I just said a minute ago, that we really do believe that young families are going to want to live here. So I don't, I don't think that would be a problem.
And backyards are roughly from like the back of the house to the back property line, roughly?
I think right now.
Probably 30, 35.
I was gonna say 25 or 30, so we can certainly get to a 40 or whatever we think a desirable number is. Yeah, if you add an extra five, 10, 15 feet, I think that's reasonable.
Any other questions, comments, concerns from the board, and then I'll go to Q and A and we can come back for discussion? Public comment is what I mean. All right. On with that, is there anyone here?
She does have one.
No, that was already sent the email, so I'm sure they were ready. Tim, Tim sent.
Was it new one for this week?
Yes.
Tim Finn.
Yeah.
Yeah, he amended his or he supplemented his prior comment.
Okay. I did not see that one, so I'm gonna read it real quick. Um.
30 feet now to answer your question, from back door to back of lot.
30 feet currently.
No.
Thank you for looking into that.
I think he's online if he wants to.
Lindsay, he might be online.
Thank you. Um. Okay. Uh. Is there anyone here? Sorry, if you guys if there's anyone here that wishes to comment regarding this project? No? Okay. Anyone online that wants to provide a comment, you can either unmute yourself or provide the comment in the chat. Tim's comments, a couple of concerns are where will people park? Where will they place their garbage cans, lawn mowers and such?
Parking, we talked about, would need to be on the street.
Yep.
There is, I believe, plentiful street parking, especially on that side of the street right now. Garbage cans, I can see them tucking them maybe back behind their front steps on the back, bringing them out when it's garbage day. Lawnmower, I don't know. They could also keep that behind the house. Obviously, they're not going to keep it in the front. Or, what'd you say, build a shed? Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know what, I don't know what is allowed as far as a shed or an outbuilding if you own a home here, so I can't speak to that, but someone certainly could, if it's allowable, put a shed back there.
I don't know if the garbage cans can be stored in the front.
No, not in the, yeah, I was saying the back.
No, the garbage cans.
Yeah, you know, even garbage cans, I would think they would tuck in the back. But again, it's going to depend on what the
For the middle units, how would they access their garbage cans?
They would have to walk them around.
They would have to walk, then they'd have to walk through their neighbors' yards.
They would, you know, go out there 30 feet and around. If it's not allowed to be kept in the front.
Does this project require site plan approval?
Because it's a single-family home, so.
Ah. Yes, okay. Multi-family, single-family. Um.
So given the relief, they won't have access to the back.
Tim, that's a good point. Um. Well, hold on, is there anyone else online that would like to provide a comment regarding this project for the board?
Can I just point something out quickly?
No, hold on.
Oh, sorry.
And sorry, I just clarify for everyone, including myself, is we may ought to make sure that comments are to the board and will relate such questions to you guys to answer. So just going to follow that process. Okay, so no more public comment. Um. Steve, you had a question?
Yeah, regarding the message that was posted. Could we go back to the garbage can refuse garbage pickup? Topic. Is there an alley or a service road or drivable lane where a city garbage truck could come down and pick up everybody's garbage? Without having to figure out if I'm in the middle unit, how am I going to get it out front?
Right, there, there is not at this, at this point in time, that is not in our plans to build like an alleyway or road down the middle. It is not part of our plan.
Good.
I'm just doing a quick Google search for code to see if.
For the code?
Yeah, see if like any sort of restriction of like a hidden garbage like pickup like area in a front yard is allowable.
Just trying to think about my days. I mean, I feel like there we're not reinventing the wheel here, right? There are examples of row homes all over the city of Troy. And certainly in blocks of four or more.
I'm gonna Google search. Yeah. Sorry to interrupt.
No, that's okay.
And I think to some extent, the reason why this becomes unique is, yes, you're correct. There are a lot of like row homes within the city of Troy. But in those conditions, they have an alleyway behind the building. So they have that public right-of-way where they've got the trash and garbage pickup. You're not creating that condition here, which is why I'm at least, you know, I think why the question has come up and why I'm digging into it a little bit. It's required for site plan approval. That's the only thing that's come up so far. Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, you can go ahead and ask it. And well, yes, that's the thing is that you can go ahead and ask it, but I think I know the answer, but go ahead and ask it.
How are you utilizing garbage pickup on your site, the gym or the apartments in the school? And could these townhouses also utilize that same?
So our tenants, our tenants in both the school and the gym building walk their garbage out from their apartments and to a centralized dumpster, dumpster site, one at the gym building and one at the school building. So, you know, they walk their garbage all that far. Which is, you know, another reason why, to me, walking it around, though I completely understand the concern. Wouldn't be that big of a deal. If you're asking, could they walk it over and put it in those dumpsters?
Well, would you allow them to?
Um, we could consider that. I think we're, we're trying to keep these things very separate, right? So we don't, we don't want to tie someone's use of garbage to, to either of the other buildings, right? We want it to be a standalone building. If we had to do that, I'm sure we could.
There actually isn't a restriction. All dumpsters, garbage cans or other containers for refuge associated with non-residential uses or multi-family dwellings of four or more dwelling units shall be located in a side or rear yard enclosed by walls or opaque fencing, one pieceable. And that does not apply to single-family homes. Or multi-family units with three or less dwelling units.
But each of these has four units. Each block has four units. I realize they're being sold separately.
Yeah, it's just like a party wall. I mean, that's the thing is it's, it's not a multi-family. It's a single-family proposal, so you would be able to place garbage in the front yard.
Which code section did you read?
Sorry. Oh, I lost it now. Hold on. Uh. 28566. And in any property, so all uses shall locate dumpsters, garbage cans or other refuge receptacles on the subject property, not within the subject right-of-way. So it's yeah, 28566. Page 92.
Yep. 92.
I mean, we, we are residents of this neighborhood too, right? So we don't want to create an unsite like garbage situation at all. I was just talking to Joe about my sister who lives in Hoboken, New Jersey, has no access to any, any rear alley or anything. She only has access to the front and what they have in the front of their house is for lack of any better visual, it's almost like this podium where the top lifts open and their garbage, or the front actually opens, I believe, and their garbage can is stored in there. It's very attractive looking, just looks like part of the streetscape. And that's how they hide their garbage in there. But we, again, we, we don't want garbage overflowing on the sidewalk. We don't want ugly garbage cans in front. So I'm quite sure we could come up with a creative solution to make this look nice for those couple of units in the center.
This is not, you're saying this does not require side plan review?
Correct. Yes, this, yeah.
All right.
Because it's
First of all, I I'm not sure, but I think there might be another section of code that applies. I'm gonna have to ask to, to have an opportunity to research that.
Yeah, that's related for site planner review.
Subdivision, right?
We, we did go to planning for the subdivision, but that wasn't for site plan review. That was just to approve the subdivision, which then we were I don't know if we were officially deferred to zoning or if we just kind of just discussed the variances and then came here. But I do have to eventually go back to planning for them to approve just the subdivision, but not looking for, I believe, site plan items.
Right. But the ultimately code enforcement, when you're getting building permits, would review the plans for code compliance.
Correct.
They do not want garbage cans out front. And I don't know if there's specific code provision, but I think there might be.
You gotta make sure you're speaking on the mic. Gonna be on that tonight. Gonna be on that tonight.
I know, I know that in general, the administration does not want garbage cans out front. I do not know if there's a specific code provision, but I think there might be. I thought that was what was their concern was based on. Uh, other than 28566. And obviously, if we approve the very, if you, if you approve the variances as. Uh, requested, there will be no way to, to not have the garbage cans stored in the front of the building. I don't know if you, are you offering, are you saying that there'll be some kind of shed attached to the front of the structure or?
I, I'm saying that was simply an idea I had right this second, thinking again about my sister's home in Hoboken, and just expressing that our desire is for this to be a lovely, nice, neat neighborhood and.
Sure.
Not to leave people hanging, for sure.
Would, would a shed be acceptable if that?
I don't, I don't know, I've got a. Frankly, I, I need an opportunity to look into the legality of it, really, I think. That's what I would ask, you do just one meeting maybe.
And to that, I mean, if they're building these. Historic looking structures. I don't think you want a shed in the front, it just, it doesn't.
Plus, you also have, you have to have the big city containers now. And you're gonna, I mean, your, your rendering should show, you know, four city cans in front or something like that, it's not.
Yeah, we need some garbage. Provisions, provisions for garbage.
Some of those sheds can look very, um, uh, nice and, uh. Cohesive with. A historic look, I've seen them, so, but whether they're acceptable or not. Know the story.
Well, I think it's worth looking into, at least in my code, there's nothing precluding it. I think there's a way to keep it shielded and hidden, that's likely what would be requested of the planning board. I generally still have the concern of, um. While this is area variances, this is self-created because you are doing a subdivision with excess property over. So I just still generally have that concern, um. Is there, sorry, is there any other? There are single dwelling units. Yeah, okay, um. Any other comments or discussion among the board? And then I'm going to make a motion to table so Rick can research this.
You also requested larger backyards.
Yes, and I would like, yeah, so to that kind of end.
The only thought I, I just wanted to, um, have considered for, you know, once we are able to just make a decision. Um, is that since this is project, the first project. Uh, and there are these variables that we're trying to nail down and not sure how, you know, they'll be. Uh, accepted and, and seen and appreciated or not. Um, that it not be held to a precedent for, uh, the future projects. That it is limited to the specific facts and the specific characteristics of this, uh, initial project.
I think you can make a stipulation like that when you come to vote on the approvals.
I just wanted to have that be considered.
Any other discussion?
I just want to say that what Tim has, how can someone walk around when someone else's property, if they have fences, I mean, I just think that's an important consideration.
Oh, yeah, no, i- in the middle units, it would either garbage cans in front, or there's, there's some other way to access the property. You can't expect someone to, to do that.
In the winter.
I mean, now like we've had so much snow, Rick, but. Does get cold. All right, uh, I am going to make a motion to, uh, table this for this evening, do I have a second?
I would second the motion to table.
All right, um, I'm going to do all in favor on this one.
Yes, in favor.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
All in favor. We'll see you again, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Okay. No, but we can talk after.
All right.
Um.
What is the distance between the curb and the building front?
Well, it, uh, new sidewalk. Five feet off the curb plus 20 feet to the house.
From the curb?
No, 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 it was, it was 20 feet from the sidewalk to the house. They used to have driveways in there, which would have been 20 feet to the front of the house. Yeah, so the house is already set back 20 feet from the sidewalk, 30 feet from the curb, give or take. I know my thought. Try and at least. Okay. Um, new business, PLZBA 20250013, um, 558 River Street. Um, this is. Increasing the prior sign variance for bargain grocery. Good evening.
Good evening, um, my name is Adam, and I'm from Adirondack Sign Company, uh, representing First Columbia. I also have Nate here with me. Uh, what we're requesting is, like you said, uh, additional signage for the bargain grocery. But the additional signage that we're looking for this time is not necessarily part of marketing, it's part of wayfinding. Um, from my understanding and from what, uh, First Columbia has explained to us, and the reason they want to spend some money on signage. People are having trouble finding the parking for the grocery store. If you notice that there is no curb cut, I believe it's. River Street, excuse me, River Street, um, there's no curb cut, so you have to come around the building, or you have to come up, or on Hoozick Street can come around. So the whole point of this is there's one over by Hoozick Street directing people down the alleyway to get to the parking lot. And the other one's on the other side of the building, which we did a, um, projection sign, we had to do it vertical because we didn't want it sticking out too far. To let people know to come to the back of the building, come around to park. And that is the whole point of the additional sign request. Um, show anything that you would like to add. Okay.
Uh, any questions from the board? Do we have pictures?
Um.
You.
Angie should be able to pull up those site pilot and application, if you have her a minute.
Um, I apologize, I didn't realize that we had to do it digital, I have print, I have printed stuff out if, uh.
I think Angie.
Okay.
Sure. So the whole, um, reason we're asking for this. You can see, I don't want to step away from the mic to point, but the, um, the parking lot for the building. We kind of inherited, I don't know if any of you remember it being Smith Beauty before we converted it to bargain grocery. But the lot for primary access to the south of the building itself is elevated relative to River Street or, um. So there's a hard, um, condition to having us put a driveway into that. It also didn't make sense from, uh, traffic safety standpoint, having a curb cut in from a off-street lot. I think that close to the corner of Hoozick Street wouldn't have been great either. And it would have made a risk of turning left to come out, so we were trying to use what was there. For parking for the building and just kind of adapt to circulate around, which we can do by virtue of the alleyway. Coming off of Vanderhaiden Street from the north, and also the rights we have with the DOT lot. Off of Hoozick Street, we own the end of the alley that abuts the state, um, right of way for the Route 7 Bridge, which we leased from the state. So we can come from either side. All we're asking for is some signage at those two spots to direct customers for the grocery store to get into the lot from those nodes of access. And make it easier for them to find where to park their car and just make it easier for customers to find their parking spot.
Can I ask a question? So, so Mike, so, okay, so if I'm on River Street. The front of your building, right? Am I seeing this, the bottom, this is my question, I just wasn't sure where that sign is. So if I'm on River Street and I'm heading south, like I'm heading. Where's, where's the signs that's gonna, because, because I have experienced exactly what you said. It's like, how do I get there? So if I'm on River Street, how do I find the parking with your sign?
You have this one.
Vanderhaiden side.
Okay.
That will tell people, come in to Vanderhaiden and then come around the back, and that will put you into the lot. If you miss that, you could go all the way over to Hoozick and take a left up and then take another left.
Second sign?
We don't want to ask for too much.
Okay, okay, all right.
Are they double-sided?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, I mean, for the most part, other than, you know, having the logo on it, I consider this wayfinding signage, which we don't. Call out specifically in our code as being an exemption, but it really is wayfinding. Um, my only concern, or question rather, is, is how did you arrive at the size of the signs? The lettering height seems kind of large from what was required. I looked at like MUTCD and it was like four to six inches for capital letter height, like you were like eight plus, so.
It was more just to try and grab the motorist's attention when they're going by. Make it easier for them, so you're not squinting and causing issues slowing down or being too distracted. You can see it clearly and say, oh, parking, let me go this way and make it kind of intuitive for the person and vehicle.
Would you be willing to shrink the size, given that that's like MUTCD, like sign lettering height is like four inches minimum for 30 miles an hour? So that it's less square footage, less intrusive?
I, in my experience, that's, those measurements aren't really effective. Um, we could certainly reduce it down, but I would hate to do this and have to come back to you and say, it's not working, people aren't seeing it. Um, you really need to, with the general public, from my experience, you need to really make a statement in order to get them to come in. To get them to find things, especially wayfinding. Granted, the bargain grocery logo is on there, it needs to be on there, because what is the parking for is a public parking, what, what are we trying to convey? So we do have to put the logo on there, so they do understand that. But my experience, those measurements don't exactly work. The one on the far side of the building, the, um, the vertical one, that one is so far back in the building. That you lose sight of it unless we made it that large, and hence the reason it is that big.
Are you aware of what the, uh, chair referred to as MUTCD?
Yes.
Oh, the manual.
I am, but I, I.
Control devices?
Yeah, but I don't agree that that's going to work here, from my experience.
Well, may be necessary to be abided by depending on the circumstance.
What is the lettering height on this sign?
On this one right here? I, let me see if I have that, I don't know if I actually have it.
I saw it on this one, just what, kind of.
Uh, let's see, that sign is.
No, this is the overall dimension of the sign, it doesn't do the.
It's probably close to eight, it's probably close to eight inches, just, just by gauging being 36 in height. The parking part of it.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I'm trying to balance, I completely understand what you're trying to do, I don't have an objection to the wayfinding. Um, you do want to grab people's attention, but, you know, those kind of standards are, are there to also minimize signage clutter? And that's the balancing act I'm trying to have.
We could certainly reduce it down, I mean, it's, it's not an issue, we're just trying to make it effective, that's all.
Well, balancing effectiveness, uh, with safety is, I think, the ultimate goal of the MUTCD.
Any other questions, thoughts?
Um, I had two questions, not so much on signage, but on the, um, uh, seeker, uh, short form. There are two responses that look a little odd to me.
Okay.
What are they? Well, one is, um, you check yes, as, uh, the proposed action is a permitted use under the zoning regulations. And, um. Let's see, the other one is the underground storage tanks were removed from neighboring properties, is that, uh? It's. Just 0013.
It may have been part of the auto population.
It just jumped out to me and.
Well, the use would apply to the actual site, so the site isn't allowed use, so that's probably where that comes.
One, we didn't have any USTs on this property.
You open the door to review, in my opinion, you know. It's something you may want to look into, if you're not aware of it already.
But for the first question, for permitted use, is that use as a grocery store?
Uh, well, uh, it just says, uh, the proposed action, I'm assuming the proposed action is the action for the signage.
Well, the sign is, I, yeah, I guess that would be checked because the signage is allowed, but you're asking to increase the.
Well, it didn't specify. Usually people put no, because you're, you're asking for a variance, that's all I'm getting at. And then the tank issue is. Sometimes there's a can of worms. Yeah.
I'm trying to see if we have the size for the, the letter size for the signage.
No, we don't get that specific in our field about signage.
The old code used to have that. Because, yeah, Eric is also saying that a light print would also distract traffic, the control devices.
Sometimes the software for that, uh, that form is a little. Odd.
Is it the permit application we're talking about, or the seeker form, I didn't, we don't have to fill out seeker forms for this board, do we?
Yeah, you need, because this is, this is an unlisted action, so we've got to do a negative declaration on the action of increasing, so.
Short.
Maybe, which one, which number is that?
What number, did you get flagged?
What number, what?
What number question are you referring to?
Um.
It's like the last one.
Number five, and well, the tanks, the tanks is number 20, but five, 5A, actually.
Yeah, most likely is.
It's, it's actually referencing the proposed action, which is not, it's not the, the sign itself there.
Oh, okay.
Not the sign itself.
What number was the UST?
For the tanks?
Yeah, number 20.
So number 20.
Right before the signature.
Yeah.
Just past it.
Yeah, that's my admin, she must have just checked by mistake.
I mean, I'm happy to supply the board with my phase one environmental, if you'd like to see, we checked this out like five years ago.
Something that, uh, can be an issue for various reasons.
Oh, yeah, that would have been, that would have been automatically flagged by the system, a neighboring properties, it's not this property in particular, yeah.
Do you want to submit a corrected? A corrected EAS?
Um. On. Before I come back to you guys, is there anyone here that would like to comment regarding this project? Anyone online, Angie, can you go back to? Anyone online? Angie, can you go back to?
No. There's no, oh, I'm looking for, there's no, there's no online.
No comments from all, okay, no comment. Um. Uh, discussion among the board, uh, my concern is getting the, the smallest signage that is effective. I think a smaller lettering can be just as effective. Can understand that the sign mounted to the, to the building, given the distance you're trying to get it, you know, you'd want it to be slightly bigger, but I think you can be just as effective. I don't know if the board, other board members agree or disagree with me. So that they have our comments. Do you guys agree with that, or you don't care, or?
No, I, I, I agree. I, I think it could be a distraction and maybe go too far in terms of, you know, people just getting confused and seeing that big sign and maybe going too far.
So I, I'm gonna be the opposite here, I, I disagree, like, so I tried to park to go here, and I couldn't, I couldn't figure out how to park personally. So, um, but, and I think of someone like my father, who like needs these big signs, right, to say like, go here, and I think that the bigger the sign would be better, personally. But yeah, I would agree that I don't, I don't know how to get into this parking lot now, even after I saw the map.
We're all supportive of the wayfinding.
Yeah.
I just, um, but I, so I, I just think the bigger sign makes sense to me, and I don't think it's a, to me, not a safety thing with distracting drivers. Signs like that all the time.
Can I chime in? I'm with Zach. I, I don't have a problem with the signs, the size of the, the lettering, cuz I, I've been there and I've been like, I, I got frustrated, I'm like, I'm just not gonna go there. I literally drove away.
Yeah.
An opinion? I can understand the need for the sign. Don't have an objection to the size of the sign, but I have an objection to the size of the print or the block letters for parking. They seem large and disproportionate to what else is on it. Just a thought.
Well, I think part of it is that it's not like it's roadfront, it's great, it's, it's off, it's literally, it, it's not on the sidewalk.
No, it's a very good point, it, it's secondary, when you think about it, it's.
It's almost like.
Off of Huzek and off of Vanderhaiden.
Like in Providence, like Trader Joe's has it written on their building, like, because you're looking around for it, you know, it's like, I mean, that would be great to have that on your.
No, but we, we all know we're a historic building, we're trying not to plaster it on the structure distastefully, so this seemed like a good way to achieve the wayfinding goals, to show people, this is how you get in, don't be frustrated. Don't, no, don't not come back because you're frustrated. Um, and I encourage everybody to come, if you haven't, it's a great little store and it's doing uh, better now that the weather's getting nicer and people are starting to walk, but we are still reliant on vehicular traffic for them to do sales and, and do well at this location, which is kind of why it was put at this spot. You're at kind of the crossroads of Troy, Huzek and River, probably the center intersection of the entire city, so it's accessible to the whole city and also people coming in from outside, which is great, you get more spend of dollars in the collar city, we think that's wonderful, and especially in North Central where we need commercial investment and sales to be happening, so that was our, our theory behind doing the size that we had picked. And I'm, I'm grateful for some of the support on the board for why we did that, glad it's, um, it's being picked up. And, uh, we hope that we can get it approved at this size, uh, if possible this evening.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, again, I understand that perspective, I'm itching for something a, a little bit smaller to the effect of the variance of trying. Part of the reason the variance is there is to reduce sign clutter and the square footage of signage generally. Um, so that's part of what I'm trying to adhere to by making that request, but you guys can take a look at it a little bit. I'd appreciate it, but I think don't go too so, too small, is what you're hearing from the rest of the board.
Well, on, on the note of clutter, and these are real wayfinding specific signs, I think we all agree on that. We did put them in spots that are not like just slapping tons of signage in one spot and making it look hodgepodge, so there is a method to where they were placed on the site and on the building. So we're not trying to just plaster the side of the building with tons of messaging and make it confusing, it's, they're at these spots for reasons to pull people in those nodes so they can get into that lot and make it the successful access for your visit.
Yeah, I mean, unfortunately, our code doesn't distinguish between signage and wayfinding signage. Um, and I think because, while I understand exactly why you guys did it, and I think you've done it tastefully of having your logo on the signage, that also kind of helps or hurts our argument of it's simply wayfinding. Um, but we're gonna, you guys are gonna recommit, update your seeker form, right? We wanna.
Yes, we'll take the UST checkbox that should not have been selected.
Sorry about that.
Alright.
Um, we figured it out, right? Um, so I'll make a motion to table this till next month, do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, one, uh.
Sorry, Evie, yes?
Uh, just a, uh, clarification or, or amendment to the motion that, uh, the MUTCD be, uh, uh, checked to, uh, find some sort of either, uh, comparable or, uh, uh, guidance that can be utilized, uh, to help in terms of not reducing too much, but giving you also something to help support uh, the amount of the reduction and keeping it for the purposes intended.
Okay. All right, motion to table, second?
Second.
Zach, thank you. Um, roll call vote, Evie?
Uh, I'm in favor of tabling.
Zach?
Yes, in favor.
Steve? Tamara?
Okay.
Lindsay, yes. We will see you next month, thank you. Okay. PLZBA twenty twenty-five zero zero one four, two nineteenth, Fourth Street. This is an area variance, seeker unlisted action, um, expanding a current area of an existing building to create an assembly meeting space. Total tenant space is three thousand square feet, but there is a maximum of twenty-five hundred square feet, so you're requesting a variance of five hundred square feet.
Yes.
How's about your project?
Good evening, my name's Adam Patella, I'm an architect representing this project. The project is currently the Alias Coffee Cafe. As of now, they occupy the, let's call it approximately eleven hundred square feet of a three thousand square foot existing building. And they're looking to expand their use to the rest of the building. The building, you can kind of consider it in three parts, uh, there's kind of the existing cafe space, there's a center, uh, large open room that would be used as the assembly space, and then the rear of the building is essentially an egress hallway, two new bathrooms, and then a, um, like a storage kind of single van garage and a small roasting area. Um, so essentially, the assembly use is effectively approximately twenty-one, twenty-two hundred square feet, but the entire project is three thousand square feet. There are no changes to the front facade, there are minor changes to the rear facade, um, essentially, uh, flipping the location of the overhead door within an existing wood-framed opening and adding, um, an egress door out the back.
And adding what?
An egress door out the back. I think, um, if you look at the.
And do you mind putting up, pulling up the site plan for us?
The photos that were provided kind of illustrate kind of a swap, basically. Um, we've already presented in front of the planning board, we have our, uh, public hearing next month, or this month. There's, uh, no expansion of the footprint of the building, there's no new construction on the outside at all, it's all interior.
In this space was, uh, when it was first approved, this was storage space?
Yeah, they were approved essentially for the, um, on the drawing, the right-hand most area of the, the building.
And you said it was eleven hundred square feet was kind of the, the coffeehouse space, and then twenty-two hundred square feet, so.
The existing coffee area that they were approved for and currently occupy is approximately eleven hundred square feet. It's not all seating, in fact, it's, it's, it's like maybe eight chairs in the whole place. And yes, they'd be seeking to expand to occupy the remaining two-thirds of the building. The, the majority of the space, excuse me, the space for the majority of the time would be used just as kind of coffee service. Um, but they have, uh, they'd like to host kind of occasional music events, community events, like, um, neighborhood watch things and stuff like that. Um, poetry nights, things of that nature as well.
What's the space being used for current, the space that you're asking to use? What is it being used for now? Is it just storage?
So it's, I mean, to be frank, it's storage, but the tenant, um, began to use it for some of these other purposes, and we're just kind of correcting everything and getting every, getting all of our um, appropriate approvals.
Okay.
Correct, I suppose. But yeah, it's, it's essentially a, a, a storage room at this point, wide open, there's no walls.
And that's part, part of the improvements that you're recommending, the other improvements you're doing is for access egress, like bring that space up to code for proper use, correct?
Yeah, um, so the, the reason for the additional egress corridor out the back is to be able to have an occupant load of ninety-nine people, which is too, uh, to code. Um, the building is not sprinkled, so we're limited to ninety-nine people, as long as we have our correct two means of egress.
Okay, and you said the assembly space is how much?
So, um.
My numbers weren't adding up the way I wrote them down, which is still.
So the, again, the, the right-hand side is approximately eleven hundred square feet, the center area is approximately nine hundred square feet.
Okay.
And the remaining is about a thousand. Um, but as you can see, kind of where we've got tables and chairs located, that would be the, you know, if there's a, a larger event or whatever happening, that's where that would occur, otherwise it would kind of just be tables and chairs, similar to like stacks or something like that. Um, where there's just coffee service, people would get their coffee at the front and set up their laptops and read there. The, the back of the space would be used, um, Hernan, the owner, has, uh, like a commercial van that he brings his coffee beans to different places and stuff like that, he would just park it in the back. And then the other room is a small roasting room where he would do his occasional roasting.
The actual, like, public space within the building is, is less than the twenty-five hundred it does.
Right, it's approximately twenty-two hundred square feet, if, if you were to include the egress corridor.
Can you point out the egress corridor?
Sure, if you can pan the drawing, it's. So if you either pan or just zoom out one, one click, maybe.
Wrong way.
What?
Yep. There you go.
There you go. So I guess to step off the mic. And it egresses to the alley.
Where's the front door?
Uh, the right-hand side.
Right. That's it, yeah, that's it.
Okay.
Any other questions? Uh, any public comment from those here? Um, anyone online? Wish to comment regarding this proposal? Nope. Um, discussion?
I don't.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, we have seeker action, um, Angie, do you mind pulling up the seeker form? I did review this one, that looks good. Evie, do you mind?
Uh, no, uh, you're all ready?
Yeah.
Uh, is there, uh, it's, uh, there's the short form, is it, uh, um, this is this is one four.
PLZBA twenty twenty-five zero zero one four, yeah.
Um, is there a neg deck associated with this? Yes?
That's what I would say we're making the motion for.
It's, it's an unlisted action.
And so we're gonna make a motion for a neg deck, it's not an listed action.
Chair, uh, in regard to PLZBA twenty twenty-five dash zero zero one four, as supported by the staff reports and the short environmental assessment form submitted by the applicant, I ask that the board find this proposal to be an unlisted action, uh, for a neg, a neg, neg, uh, negative declaration, uh, with sufficient information available.
I second. Uh, roll call vote, Evie?
Uh, yes, approve.
Zach?
Approve.
Steve?
Approve.
Tamara?
Yes.
Lindsay, yes. So that is motion by Evie, second by Lindsay, all in favor. Um, I am going to make a motion that we, uh, approve this area variance, which is a relief of five hundred square feet, um, of commercial space. Um, given that, uh, the proposed use as assembly space and coffeehouse um, will not create an undesirable change in the neighborhood, um, or detriment to nearby properties, is not increasing or decreasing the size of the building, it's just utilizing its existing square footage. Um, and it is, uh, not substantial in that it's just a small increase, and again, an existing structure um, will not have an adverse impact. Um, and the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood, again, is there's very minimal building alterations. Um, and yeah, with that, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Tamara. Uh, roll call vote, Evie?
Uh, yes, approve.
Zach?
Approved.
Approved.
Yes.
Tamara? You guys are ahead of me, I'm going too slow tonight. Lindsay, yes. Um, all right, motion by Lindsay, second by Tamara, all in favor. You have your very.
Thank you.
Have a good night. All right, um, if, if Russ is leaving, then our last applicant, applicant is not here.
Um, yeah, it's not, I don't know who is on.
Um, so do we need to officially table this one, or do we?
I think you should mention it for the record.
Okay, so PLZBA twenty twenty-five zero zero one five, uh, Christie Street. Um, this was requesting a use variance, um, since the applicant is not here this evening to talk about the project. Um, I make a motion that we table this.
Second that motion?
I think he sent a, a public comment, I don't know if you guys saw it.
He sent a public?
He sent a public comment, so I don't. He had told me that he had said you today, and he will let his architect attend the meeting, I don't know what happened, but he did send, uh, uh, is it Edward?
Yes.
His own application.
Yes, Edward.
Yes.
Edward.
Yeah.
Is that one of the two people online or three?
I don't think so.
No, it's Eric and.
There's another person on Zoom.
John. I know them both, they are not the applicant. Uh.
So, he's not here, and his architect is not here, so.
Okay, well, I'm not gonna go through. Yeah, um, so I make a motion to table, do I have a second?
Second.
I'm gonna give this one to Tamara. Um, motion by Lindsay, second by Tamara, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, um. I will make a last motion to, uh, adjourn our meeting, do I have a second?
Second.
Steve, I'm gonna give you this one, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No. I hope you guys are okay with me using my discretion on.